All right, good evening and welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission Meeting of November 5th, 2015. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Thank you. Keith, would you take role, please?
Sure. Larry Fox?
Here.
Jeff Newsome?
Here.
Joe Kalani?
Here.
Sue Grissom?
Here.
Mike Mitchell?
Here.
Tom Murphy?
Here.
All here.
All right, thank you. Next up, item for approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved, support.
A motion to approve from Commissioner Kalani, a second from Commissioner Mitchell. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Proposed name motion carries. Next up, approval of our meeting minutes.
So moved, support.
Commissioner Newsome, second from Commissioner Murphy. Are there any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Proposed name motion carries. Next up, item six, call of the public. Anyone tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll close call of the public. There is no public hearing. Next up, item A, site plan number 533, Mug and Bops site plan with two special land uses. So applicant would like to have a seat, we'll turn it over to our planning director for a brief introduction and then turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. We had a big crowd tonight. I always knew we were big with the youth demographic, so it's good to see that they turned out tonight. Before this planning commission again this evening is the proposed Mug and Bops gas station with a convenience store, a drive-through dual branded Dunkin' Donuts, and Baskin Robbins restaurant component. The proposal is proposed on the northeast corner of Clark Road and M-59, just down the road from here, on a what is currently a vacant five acre parcel that is zone general commercial. The proposed use, particularly the gas station component and the drive-through component, are considered special land uses in the G.C. General Commercial zoning district. So with any special land use, the role of the planning commission is to, if they so choose, make a recommendation to the township board, and then the township board ultimately has the authority to approve a special land use, or in this case, two special land uses in that zoning district. When I say the applicant is before you again tonight, that's because the planning commission has an opportunity to review this site plan twice before, once in July and once in early October. The July meeting was the required public hearing for the special land uses. Anytime you have a special land use proposed as part of a development, a public hearing is required, and that was held back in July. In both trips to the planning commission, July and October, the planning commission advised the applicant to revise and resubmit their proposal based on a number of issues related to the site plan and related to the special land use requirements for the use. The applicant has made an effort to address the issues that were discussed most recently at the October 8th meeting and is obviously back before you tonight with their revisions. Planning departments typically requires a, or typically provides a kind of a standard format review letter for site plans and special land uses, and you've seen our standard review letter twice before for this proposal. What we didn't want to do is kind of recycle a lot of that same content that the planning commission has already been over twice before. What we try to do is provide a condensed review that focuses mostly on the issues that came up at that October 8th meeting. But as is my writing style, even when I try to come up with a condensed letter, it still turns into an eight-page letter. So that's what you have in front of you in your review packet, the letter from the planning department dated October 29th of this year. And what we've done is go through all the items that the planning commission asked the applicant to revise back in October 8th, along with some other issues that staff wanted to get some planning commission input on, in addition to those specific issues that came up on October 8th. As we did in our prior review letter when this came before the planning commission in early October, pardon me, staff is recommending that this planning commission make a recommendation of conditional approval to our township board, that this proposal get forwarded on to our township board with a recommendation from our planning commission of conditional approval, and we've laid out what those conditions should be. And again, tonight, that is again our proposal, that the planning commission forward this on to our township board with a recommendation of conditional approval. Less conditions hopefully this time around, because the applicant has addressed many of the issues that came up back in early October. For the benefit of everyone in the audience, I just want to flip to their proposed site plan, and I got to rotate it. So again, northeast corner of M-59 and Clark Road, the applicant is proposing one point of access off of M-59, two points of access off of Clark Road. The fueling canopies would be along the M-59 side, there would be seven stations, each one a double stack pump, so there are a total of 14 fuel dispensers. The convenience store with the drive-through on the west side of the proposed convenience store, this would be, as I mentioned, the dual branded Dunkin' Donuts, Baskin Robbins. The applicant is proposing to leave this area between the store and their north property line in its natural state for the time being, although they would want to reserve the option of developing that in some form in the future. They've indicated that they don't know what that may be yet, but they would want to retain that option. And then if we flip to the landscape plan, the applicant has proposed, as we, similar to what the planning commission saw back in October, a significant landscape screening along the north property line for the benefit of the residential neighborhood Heritage Meadows just adjacent to the north. That is my attempted a brief overview. Obviously, the planning commission has seen this plan multiple times before. I'm happy to answer any specific questions. The applicant is here to answer questions on their behalf, and at this point, I would pause and give the planning commission the option to turn it over to the applicant.
All right, thank you. Yes, we'll turn it over to you.
I don't think we have anything extra to add. I think we'd be happy to address them as the board asks us questions.
Okay.
If that's all, if that's acceptable.
That's, that's great. If the planning commission will grab the letter from the planning department dated October 29th, it would be starting on either labeled packet page 10, or page 2, in the center of the page would be the fourth sheet of paper in. See planning commission directives from October 8th, those were the open issues, as Dave said. So we just want to hit those one by one, we'll make sure we're complete and can make a decision at that time. So item one, note the dumpster materials on the site plan, it would appear as though those are complete now. Any questions? Item two, widen the southerly Clark driveway to add a dedicated left lane aligned with Rovi Drive. Dave, your comment?
Yes, so keep in mind that Rovi Drive, the Rovi Drive approach to Clark Road is a two-lane approach, and what the applicant is proposing based on directive from the planning commission is a three-lane approach. There's always going to be a challenge when you try to line up a two-lane approach with a three-lane approach, because then you're always going to have an offset with the through movement, either the people going from the proposed Mug and Bops across Clark to Rovi, or vice versa. In this case, they've offset it on the south side, so there would be a little bit of a jog if you were to be coming eastbound from Rovi into the proposed Mug and Bops site. There would be a bit of a jog as you go across Clark. Ultimately, Livingston County Road Commission approves commercial driveway permits, and it would be their authority on where to ultimately approve the location of the driveway. So since the applicant has complied with the planning commission's directive on providing that dedicated center left turn lane, we would defer then to the Livingston County Road Commission on the most, on the optimal alignment of this proposed driveway with Rovi Drive.
Okay. You guys fine with that?
Yeah.
All right. Item three, correction of the location, correct the location of the knee wall relative to the proposed site grade. I think we probably need to turn this back to you again, Dave.
I think so, although I may then turn my attention to the applicant and perhaps their engineer. I reviewed the revised grading plan, so we saw a grading plan from September, and then we saw a revised grading plan from October. Part of the revisions to the grading plan were, my understanding based on the planning commission's directive, were to enhance the grades along M-59 and along Clark Road such that your, the three-foot knee wall, decorative knee wall that they're proposing along both sides of their frontage was elevated and would better serve its purpose of screening the parking lot from the view of the adjacent road right away. I struggled to see where changes were made to the grading plan from September to October, and I think perhaps the applicant's engineer could give us a better, better idea of the changes that were made.
I think we have a, we have a handout we're going to, you're asking for input right now, Dave? I'm sorry.
Yes, if it's a handout for this topic, we'll take it.
It is, it's a handout for this topic, and I'll let Pat.
Basically, grades along Clark Road were not modified, because they're relevant to that beginning, but the grades on the south side of the parking along M-59, if you look at the two comparisons there, the contour lines, you'll notice the first contour line on the updated plan is about eight to 10 foot from the back of the curb line. So what we did is shifted those contours over and created a flat spot behind the back of the curb. So the specific grades on the curb have not changed. What it is, it's from the curb out, it goes flat now, and then goes down into the slope. So our knee wall will be put on the top of that slope.
Can you recall, Dave, when Commissioner Grissom spoke also in the previous plan, we had altered the Clark Road access as she had suggested, and so that changed from the original, but not in this recent one. So now the front along Clark, excuse me, along 59 and Clark, both are flat and adjust accordingly.
So with all that being said, is the bottom line that the knee wall will now be elevated higher?
Yes. That's correct.
And I would assume how much higher varies depending on where on the site we're talking?
Well, the fact we had before is, you know, the slope came out and started going down, and the knee wall was down here in the slope. So what we did is we carried it out, so now the knee wall is going to be here before the grade breaks.
Okay.
So yeah, it'll be, the knee wall will be higher than what it was, probably by a couple feet. Top of the knee wall will be a couple feet higher than it used to be.
Is that a fair, it'll be a couple feet higher, give or take, across the entire frontage?
That's correct.
Okay. Then I would then bounce it back to the planning commission to see if they would feel that that's satisfying their intent when they gave the applicant the directive to adjust the grades to enhance the screening capabilities of the knee wall.
Sue, you start.
Yes, what I'm understanding is the knee wall is now three foot tall, and it's at the top of the slope.
Correct.
And so it's doing the three-foot screening that's required.
Correct.
That's how I understand it.
Okay.
That's correct.
Any other questions? I think that's what I'm seeing on this plan right now. So is this page going to get, is this in the packet? Because I didn't.
It is in your, that grading plan is in your current packet, so.
But I don't think that's side-by-side comparison is.
Not that side-by-side, but the.
You were showing the differences.
Yeah, the several, yeah, we just wanted to see it.
Okay.
That is your drawing.
Right.
Could I ask just a quick question?
Sure, absolutely.
So on the landscape plan, you know where your sign is for the M-59 sign? That looks like that's going down the slope. Do you see where the sign is on the plan that's right, like if you look right there, if you blow that up, Dave, you see that, that ground sign?
I think what's going to happen is, is we're, we're going to have to adjust that slightly.
I think so.
Because of the hydrant as well as that, so it's going to take just a little bit of finesse right there to make sure it's accurate, and that will be, as you described, at the right.
It's going to be kind of in a slope area, because you kind of go down to a hole there with your drain, just as a comment, and I just didn't know if that, you're just going to finesse the grades, or that, how that sign will work.
I think, I think that the tree and the sign will have to be altered slightly, so that one is offset by the other.
Okay.
And, and it's flat.
Okay.
You all right with that?
Yeah, because I think they'll come back for a sign permit anyway.
Absolutely.
And at that point, it can get resolved. It just was one of those things where I noticed, and I was like, okay, now what happens to the sign?
Yeah, we agree.
Okay.
All right. So let's move on to item four, correct the landscape plan to ensure proposed plantings meet the minimum plant sizes of the zoning ordinance. Dave, you want, go ahead.
I was just going to say, we'll, we'll just.
You're just going to change it?
Just make them all the 24, so that there's no question.
All right.
It's just a lot cleaner.
Okay. You don't want to talk about that? Item five. Increase foundation landscaping to meet the ordinance requirements and include evergreens.
I, well, I think they've already addressed half of that, which is the 24 inches. My question would be, would the planning commission want to actually have them specify which of these clusters are meant to be evergreens as opposed to deciduous, because I don't know that they've actually called that out, and it could be something that gets, you know, gets addressed in the field.
Yeah, my, my thought was usually we see people say, you know, I have 32 of this, 48 of this plant, 16 of that one. Is it reasonable to say 50/50? Can we leave it that you're going to, you're going to select 50% of evergreen and 50% of deciduous and put it on your revised plan that you're submitting?
If, if we, if we err on the side of green, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Because in my minds, I, I see it green, and so if I can, I'll mark it 50/50, and it'll at least be that.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Is that good for everyone?
Yes.
It'll come out on the revised plan with a quantity called out.
Correct.
Okay. Item six, replace the reference of stone mulch to wood mulch. Looks like we've taken care of that. Any questions on that, guys? Hansil? Item seven, add raised landscape parking end caps to the require, as required in the northeast and southeast corners of the building, including the requiring landscape coverage.
So they have added this end island on the northeast corner and on the southeast corner. They've added some, at least one tree and perhaps a couple additional shrubs to the southwest corner. They, we talked, I spoke with Mr. Lee Cantor about the opportunity to get one or more trees in this island, and his concern was that there is, correct me if I'm wrong, underground gas lines there that would, that would be a conflict if you were to put a full tree in there. So the applicant would be asking for a slight deviation on that island because of the utilities that run right underneath it.
Well, I think also it has to do with, one end is at the detention, so one, the very tip of it is in the detention area, and then as you get closer to the building, the electric, the gas, and the water all come into that corner of the building.
So the dash line rectangle, as you can see, indicated, is there underground detention, and that's another concern on behalf of the applicant, is if you were to plant a tree there, its root system could, over time, compromise the underground detention.
You guys okay?
I'm all set.
I'm good.
We're fine with that. We are at item eight, provide additional trees north and northeast of the parking lot to satisfy the perimeter landscaping requirement. Dave?
So if you'll recall, on the last landscape plan that the planning commission saw in October, this area directly north of the drive-through queue did not have any plantings. The applicant has added, I believe it's 14 arborvitae. They are spaced a good distance apart, and so the question that I would pose to the planning commission is whether these, the species of arborvitae and/or the spacing are sufficient to accomplish the screening that the planning commission was looking for. Again, keeping in mind that my understanding is the applicant wanted to avoid some larger spruce trees within this area, because again, they're atop of the underground detention pond, and they'd be concerned with root systems, over time, compromising the detention pond, the underground detention facility.
Why don't we turn it to you? What would you suggest?
I would say that, the two different things. One, we believe that the fact that that's going to be left natural above there is going to be part of the overall look that you're expecting to see. One of the things that happens to me is, is I don't like to create an area where somebody can be hidden, and so I think that from a, from a safety perspective, I was looking at these as, as more design elements as opposed to screening per se, and so I think that if it's a full wall, I don't like the idea of somebody, you know, sitting in their car, going long, and then somebody, you know, pops through the bushes and not be seen. So to me, it was a design element and not for screening purposes, and I'll defer to your judgment.
Okay. Any comments?
You know, we've got that whole area of the, you know, the native vegetation kind of doing the screening for us, like, you're right, that's not really going to do a screening, so I don't know as a design element. I mean, looking at it that way, I wouldn't call that a requirement of our ordinance, really. They're going, you know, I don't think it falls in any thing that we need to have there.
Well, it would potentially fall in our perimeter landscape screening requirements. I mean, we do have screening requirements from a public road, but then we also have screening requirements of a parking lot from adjacent properties. I think, you're correct, that a lot of this existing vegetation is going to remain, and that will certainly serve to screen the parking lot from adjacent properties, and then we'll talk shortly here about the.
See? I mean, we're all kind of.
I don't know how many layers we really need.
Right, I don't feel that we need to require those.
Any comments? Tom, Mike?
I'm going to trade for it later, though. Set you up, but no, I don't see a need to have to do that, you guys.
You mean, leave them out?
Hey, keep them out.
Leave them out?
Yeah, let's trade for something else later, because I don't really see, it's not really providing screen. I understand your concern for safety. You've already got your line up, maybe you could use that in a better way, as a comment.
You realize that that is a trade.
It's not for, it won't be more money, it's just.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
You don't know what you traded for.
Yeah, right.
A new pitcher.
A new pitcher. All right, let's look to item nine, which is prepare a landscape plan to demonstrate effective screening of the adjacent residents through the use of a natural flow flowing meandering berm planted with evergreen trees per the ordinance. We have no berm. Dave?
Correct. What we, so based on directive from the planning commission, the applicant did go out and inventory the existing trees along the north property line, as you can see, they've indicated, I believe it's 11, that they are proposing to preserve. And then, in order to meet the requirements that, keep in mind that it is a requirement of special land use for a gas station, that if it is adjacent to a residential district, which this is, this of course is, then they are required to screen the use from the adjacent residential with a six-foot brick wall or, or a landscape treatment, or some combination thereof as determined by the planning commission. Obviously, we've had a lot of discussions about this over several meetings. What the applicant is proposing is the protecting these 11 or so trees along here, and then adding 45 Norway spruces behind and around those trees to remain. They would be a combination of eight to 10 footers, and obviously, they would grow from there, to meet that screening requirements in lieu of the brick wall, or the masonry wall. The applicant at the last meeting, the discussion was planting these trees atop a berm, and having that berm kind of meander around the existing vegetation so as not to choke off the existing vegetation. The applicant has opted to plant the trees at grade and not provide the berm, and I believe the applicant has a rationale for why, and I may ask the planning commission to have the applicant to give you that rationale.
We're ready.
We did go out and survey the tree line. It turns out that there's 11 trees in there in total that we're going to save, and we think one is, is on its way out, that one on the far east. It, it looks like it's on its last legs, so it doesn't look like it's going to stand. So in our review, some of them are like right on the property line, and if we, if we look at what the plans are for the township, they recommend two rows 12 by 12 by 12 planted across there, and what we've asked to do is, is put an additional eight trees along the line, and we took those from the perimeter, and it creates an extra layer of screening. And we think that if we disturb it and go in there and start putting in berms based on where we saw the trees, we think that it's going to be a negative to the overall area, and it will, I think there's a good chance that we'd lose some of the trees, so.
Okay. Any comments?
Yeah, I recall this discussion the last time, and there was really only one concern on the far east end, right where the elevation goes a little bit low there, of planting the evergreens in the low-lying area, but, you know, I would have to defer to our president, the landscape architect. I mean, what's your opinion on those trees on the east end of that?
You know, without getting a complete comprehensive grading plan, and I can see how the grades fall, they fall to the wetland, it's just, you know, a continued slope, and then working it around the existing trees and native vegetation out there, kind of, you know, I really don't have enough information to judge beyond that, to force in a berm, it will start to disturb, you know, the trees on either side.
Right.
To kind of squeeze one in, it will become kind of a hump.
Right.
You know?
Well, we have, if, if those are at risk, I think we have a mechanism, right, to make sure that they get, they remain live plantings?
The, the new ones or the existing?
The new ones.
Right. I mean, if you're, if landscaping gets approved as part of your site plan, and then that landscaping doesn't make it, you are obligated as part of your site plan approval to replace what didn't make it.
Yeah.
And we actually, I haven't told them this yet, but we actually hold some money back on them for the, at least a full growing season, and if, after that first growing season, there's some things that didn't make it, we don't refund their money until they replace what didn't make it.
Well, and the option would be if the berm isn't the way to go, and I'm not saying it is or isn't, and it becomes a problem when you replant, we could add some dirt down as it, we address it at that point.
I'm happy with the way it's shown.
Yeah, we would not want to add a tree if it, if the area is, is going to.
You're just going to keep planting it.
Yeah, that's not.
I guarantee you're going to know that it's dead, because we're going to come every year and make you replace it.
We understand.
All right.
Agree. Just ignore that green paint down.
They're artificial trees. So are you fine with no berm and the landscape screening?
I think it's our best situation right now.
Okay.
So, one question. So as, on the east end of this, where, where you showed the rows of trees, and it starts to drop off to the wet area, is there any opportunity to build up just the east end to bring that elevation up slightly for the trees? You know what I'm saying, right in here? My concern is that specific location is almost in direct line with the drive-through, so now we're removing the plantings.
You say that again, sir? I, I'm saying that it's in a direct line with the drive?
Well, if I'm coming, if I'm coming around on the east side of the building, you know, coming up in line to go through the drive-through, if you're with me, I'm coming up this way. So we just previously talked about removing these plantings, and now this upper east corner potentially is going to sit low, so I have lights.
Well, I, I think that the, I understand what you're saying, and I, forgive me, are you, you want me to say something?
No, no, go ahead. So my, my comment is, you know, I'm uncertain how low this corner gets, but if it is relatively low versus the rest of the plantings headed west, is there any opportunity to bring that corner elevation up?
Where is the, where is the website plan with the houses next to it? I was going to look and see where the houses are relative to, because what happens is the, the houses in that particular spot, I don't believe there's anything there, and it's the, it's like the easement section where the, where the water goes through from the wetland into the.
It comes from the north.
So I think it's empty right in there.
Oh, you don't want to mess with natural drainage here either. How about, Mike, would you feel more comfortable if we suggested maybe put 12 footers on the end down there? And that might offset the lower elevation?
I, I think that would be a plus, yes.
Would that be something you're willing to do, then?
I, I'd say, you know, the 12-foot tree is double the price of the, of the 10s, in my experience.
I think one thing to consider there, too, is, you know, the grades are kind of sloping from west to east, but so are the houses, you know, so the windows, I mean, if we put a 10 or 12-foot tree in there, you know, that'll still be high enough to be blocking the windows that are adjacent to it. What about, it's not like our trees are in a lower area than everything.
What about...it's not like our trees are in a lower area than everything else around it. The whole thing is just sloped like this.
Well, then let me propose this.
Putting the plantings down the slope.
Let's ensure that, at least on the east end, that the majority of those are at least 10-foot. I mean, I hate to see 8-footers in there. Yeah, so...
Understood.
Is there an opportunity to add trees right instead of, if you draw that straight line, instead of adding trees at the back, add trees right in front of where that straight line would be at the back of the...I don't know if you can show us, Dave, maybe I can...
Is there an interlude there?
Yeah, thank you. So right in this area, if we're concerned about a straight line right here, the line of sight, if that's who you're talking about, Mike, maybe in this area here, you could add more of a buffer that's up at the same level and not, you know, so far below.
That would probably make good sense to do that. Would that be better in your mind, Mike?
Yes, that would be...
Because it would address that curve issue, and it would directly address it.
Okay. Yeah, that would be...
Okay. So we'll see that on the next submittal.
What do you think we should add to that?
Sue?
I would do the evergreen trees over there, and it's going to work really well, because the finished grade of, you know, your parking lot is about five, six feet taller, so by having it right next to that area, it makes a lot of sense.
So would you like to see us just shift that and put two or three more at least in that spot, so on that curve? Mike, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
So that it blocks it?
Yes.
It's probably a better location, because it'll dissolve the lights, the headlights, before it even gets back across every tension area.
Yeah, absolutely.
So there's that trade for the arborvitae.
No, it's not.
No, I don't think that's what she was thinking.
Not yet.
Maybe I'm the only one who was unclear. Are we talking additional trees here at the corner?
Yes.
Taking the 10 arborvitae's out, he's going to, in that corner, add a couple more of the Norway spruce, evergreens.
That would be great.
Not removing anything.
The 10 arborvitae's are already gone.
They're already...yeah.
They're already gone. Yeah, we're not removing anything else.
Well, we're trading them.
Not yet.
I think that's a great...
So are we satisfied with the berm at the back now, Mike? You're okay?
Yes.
And you'll add the few spruce? Okay. Item 10, provide a note indicating compliance will all applicable landscaping requirements. I believe that note's been added. Number 11, provide a sidewalk connection between the proposed Clark Road sidewalk and store. That's been done, Dave. Could you show us?
Right, so just south of the southerly Clark Road driveway, they're extending the sidewalk that currently dead ends at their property line, the sidewalk that the Heritage Meadows developer put in, which dead ends right here. They're continuing that all the way down to M-59, and then there would be now a connection from that sidewalk to the southwest corner of their building.
That's good. Sure. Item 12, add a light pole fixture details and the colors to the lighting plants. Can you do that?
I...we certainly can. I mean, our expectation is that the poles would be dark browns.
You need to...yeah, just get that on the print. You just don't want them dunkin' orange.
Yes, absolutely. Okay.
All right. And you're looking for a rendering more than just the color, Dave? You need the height and everything?
I mean, the height is on the plan.
Yeah, I suspected a lot of the information that I need is buried within these very highly technical lighting specifications. What a simple guy like me wants to see is just a simple rendering of a light pole with the color, the height noted, and an indication that it meets our full cutoff requirements. And you've got some...you've got plenty of white space right there to drop that in, I think.
Yeah, typically, we see just a fly sheet from the manufacturer's website. This is what it looks like. This is the color you're buying, right?
I think it'd have to be an electrical engineer to make sense of all the great detail that's in here.
It's a little more complicated than others, that's true.
Okay. Item 13, provide the clay brick specifications on the plants. I do see those on there. Is everyone satisfied? Okay. Item 14, note the interim color of the canopy on the architectural plans. I think that that is on there. I think I did read that.
It is?
It's on the side view? Yep. Item 15, note the location of the electric car charging stations. Aren't those back there? Yeah, I think they're on there. I saw them.
You gotta keep rotating around here, but counterclockwise. It's those two, correct?
Correct.
And there is a note on the site plan. There we go. Oh, that's still on site plan. It's on there.
So while you're getting your coffee and eating your donut, you can charge your car?
Correct.
Free of charge?
No.
No, okay. Got to ask, I don't have an electric car. Other items for discussion, M-59 pathway. Dave?
Yes. So, the...at our last discussion, we discussed the alignment of the frontage pathway along The...well, it's not shown on this plan. Down the road at the New Heartland KFC, well, actually, it is shown on this plan, their frontage pathway that they installed right up to their property line is one foot inside of the MDOT right-of-way. So what planning staff was originally looking for was for Mug and Bobs, their pathway, which is currently shown closer to the back of the curb of M-59, to route it such that it...let me pull it over a little bit. Basically, we want this pathway to line up with the end of this pathway, such that whatever builds in between has a straight shot pathway across. The applicant made us aware of some challenges with that at our October 8th meeting. Those challenges include the existing drainage patterns on M-59 and the drainage swale through there, also the wetland. We recognize those, and we understand that this is an issue that MDOT is going to have to get involved with as well. They ultimately have the authority of who builds what within their public road right-of-way. And they were certainly involved in the placement of the KFC pathway. So my recommendation would be for the planning commission to defer to MDOT and the applicant and the planning department to find the optimal alignment of that M-59 frontage pathway when the applicant gets to MDOT for their right-of-way permits. Again, keeping in mind the challenges of this wetland, I don't think we want to see half of a boardwalk to nowhere. We'd rather see a pathway that, when this area develops, maybe it does have to get routed and curved through there to avoid that wetland. We know we're going to have the pathway. We would defer to MDOT to confirm where it should be within their right-of-way.
Fine with that, huh?
Yes.
Okay, that would be fine. So we now have some outdoor seating, huh?
Well, what happened there is that when we put the sidewalk in, it made sense to add that. And so when I was working with the landscape plan, we added it, and I did not talk to the engineer about adding it. So we will tell you that we will either remove it from the plan and the discussion right now and pursue it at a later date, or clearly state that we will meet your requirements. So that's what brought that up. And we'll go either way based on what you tell us to do.
I don't know that it's a request that's out of line for them to have some tables outside for folks to drink their coffee and eat their donut on a nice day.
Or a nice green cone.
That, too. But there are requirements within our zoning ordinance for outdoor seating. I don't know that they would have a whole lot of challenge meeting them. We do look for some specifications on the furniture. We want to see quality furniture that enhances the overall site as opposed to some, you know, some plastic stuff. And then there's also requirements for the hours of operation and the seasons of operation and whether or not they can have music and those sorts of things. And I would think that all of those could be addressed as a condition of approval on a resubmittal that my department could review administratively.
I would agree. We're talking two tables on the front.
Yes.
So I think if you meet the outdoor seating standard for the quality furniture, and again, not dunkin' orange, you're going to be good. All right. Noise. Dave?
Yes. The applicant provided a noise analysis that was conducted by Duncan Brands on the noise level of the proposed drive-through ordering station, the speaker system. What it is intended to demonstrate is that...let me zoom in on this part. Within 64 feet of the speaker, the decibel level of the speaker system drops to 46 decibels. Now, keep in mind where the speaker is proposed on the site, it's much more than 64 feet from the northerly property line of the residential properties. The speaker box is closer to 200 feet, so it stands to reason that by the time you get 200 feet away from the speaker box, the noise level has dropped off significantly lower than this 46 decibels. It's also what the applicant provided is some ambient noise readings that were taken within the residential development to the north, the Heritage Meadows neighborhood. And what these are meant to indicate is that the ambient noise levels are actually higher than what the noise level of the speaker box would be 60-something feet from that speaker box. In other words, this is intended to demonstrate that the adjacent residential properties would not...the noise from the speaker box would not be audible from the adjacent residential properties. Now, that being said, if this analysis proves to be wrong and the township were to reanalyze the noise levels from the drive-through operation if and when Mug and Bobs and Dunkin' Donuts is operational, then the applicant would still be incumbent...or would still be obligated to mitigate that. It's not a situation where they can say, "Well, we gave you your analysis, and you accepted it, and you approved it, so, you know, tough luck." If the applicant was to be approved, they'd be approved for a special land use, and part of the conditions of a special land use is that they comply with our noise standards. And one of those noise standards is that the speaker shall not be audible from an adjacent property line. So they've provided a noise analysis to demonstrate that they will comply, and then it will be on the township to keep an ear on things over there to ensure that they do comply, that this noise analysis proves to be accurate.
The noise analysis, I assume, was done without any screening that we're requiring anyway, right?
It's a good point.
I would think that it would definitely be even better than the analysis has predicted.
You would think that, you're right.
Well, plus they're four to five times further away.
Right. Yeah, they're not even close.
Okay, as long as you have the understanding. If it doesn't work the way you say...
We understand.
We'll come knocking at your door.
We understand.
Now, along with noise, just as we did with Speedway, one of the requirements for special land use approval was that Speedway, and I would think Mug and Bobs even more so, given the adjacent residential, no music over the loud...under the canopy. I mean, there probably needs to be an intercom system for when the attendant needs to speak to someone at the pump if there's an issue. But no music, no audible advertising, no video screens with audio built into the pumps. That we'd be very cognizant of minimizing the noise levels from this particular use, especially given adjacent residential uses.
Well, and Speedway did put those in, and then had to take them out, so probably it'd be best just to not put them in. You're familiar with what we're talking about?
I think I use those, because all of...well, all the newest dispenser systems come with a screen in there.
Right.
You don't have to have anything that's playing, but you can have a video but no audio.
Right.
The video, you know, that we would like to find a way to put in there might be, you know, your morning weather, your afternoon weather, some way to send that data to somebody so that while they're looking at it, they could, you know, have an option to hit a button that says, you know...
We understand. Here's no audio. We're about to have a screen. Audio would be more...
And I think state law does require that we have an audio connection to the...
And I think Dave's addressing that.
As Dave mentioned so.
Yeah, I think we'll have to check on the video part, too, because I think we're in no video, but...
Well, the question would be, do we consider that an electronic sign, which we do not allow? I would contend as a customer that I'm already standing there, I'm already giving you my money. I don't know that I need to be bombarded with advertising.
Literally, like news updates, sports, and whatever. That's us, because we don't...we're all stoked, people like you. You know what I mean? Some stuff just too much, right? Like, I'll talk openly, my dad and I were in a store, we had this place, and me and I both thought that it was too loud.
We don't like it. We don't want it. We're working to eliminate it.
And we asked, "Why is she filling up her car?" She loved it. And her life, "This is annoying as can be." So, I mean, that's where we stand as humans.
So we all agree it's annoying, and let's just avoid it.
I think you're going to find...we don't do electronic signs in town, and I think there could be an interpretation that that is, so you'll figure that out with staff in the township. The screen is already there, it's just what you're going to input into it.
Right. Yeah, they...I think everything works on a screen, you see this one, so...
They do. Okay, I think we're on signage. You know, all the signage on your plans is not approved, that's a separate permitting process, so...
Correct.
Anything we recommend tonight does not include any of that.
Correct.
Dave, greenbelt plantings.
Yes. The zoning ordinance obviously has requirements for the number of trees you have to plant along a public right-of-way, in this case, Clark Road and M-59. It's based on the linear footage of the frontage you have along a public road. Our calculations are that for, in the case of this proposed use, they would be required to provide 31 canopy trees in total, some along M-59, some along Clark Road. What the applicant is proposing is, if I did my count right, 22 new trees, including 19 deciduous trees, red maples, and then they would be getting credit for at least three of these Norway spruces up here along the north side. And they're also looking for credit for three existing trees. These are two of them here, up again, close to the north end. So the way we...the staff computes it, they are deficient at least six greenbelt trees or nine greenbelt trees if they are...the planning commission chooses not to give them credit for the 1, 2, 3 that they are proposing to preserve. Like with most landscaping standards, the planning commission does have the option to allow such a deviation. They may want to take into consideration some of the other treatments that are being provided along the frontage, and if they were to opt to consider such a deviation. But based on our calculations, the applicant is asking to deviate by six trees along the frontage roads.
Six, and then if we give them credit for the three spruce they added on the curve back at the driveway here this evening, even though those are not on the right-of-way?
Those are not technically greenbelt trees.
Right.
But I suppose they could be a consideration as part of a...consideration of a deviation and meeting the spirit and the intent of the landscape standards.
So if you were so inclined, then you're only off three. And I guess...
We do have a decorative wall there.
You do, and I presume that that decorative knee wall, which I think is an attractive feature, does then constrict the opportunities that they have to plant more trees.
I'm okay with it, but...
Yeah, maybe we'll just find the middle ground and just say maybe add three more trees, some shade trees, just to kind of get...
Do you have any details?
Yep, but if you want to go there, that decorative wall and those evergreen shrubs, those are all about screening.
They are.
Nothing to do with greenbelt. And then there's greenbelt requirements.
So we think that maybe that we've just not agreed on the count. We think we've already made the 31 trees, and so I'm going to send that down to you to check it out.
Okay.
And so, but welcome your input. Okay? So as you read this, as you said, Dave, there's 19...yeah, I'll wait till you get the handout.
So it's taking the spruce at the north.
Yes, yes. And so what we did was, and it's hard to see it, we asked to utilize some of the greenbelt as the extra trees we put along the north property line to help buffer the space between the two locations. So we come up with 19 new maple. The four existing that we're going to keep, and we've added eight new evergreens. And then the two rows were what were normal as required. So we believed we were at 31, plus, as you pointed out, Sue, we've added those three extra trees at the drive-through area to shield things. So, you know, what else would you like to see? What else do you think would make sense?
The way that the greenbelt trees are... The way that the greenbelt trees are written in the ordinance, greenbelt trees are along the road, so you look at the trees along M-59 and you look along Clark Road, and that's where you can count your greenbelt trees. So when you're looking on the north property line and you're adding in those, those really aren't within what they consider the greenbelt area. Those are the screening, but it doesn't fall.
I understand what you're saying, and I, and I don't think that we made it clear enough to our, our note with the planner when we said, "We allow us to take these," because for the very reason you said.
Yeah.
It's like, I don't know where else you would put the trees. And, and I, and I feel like this is very attractive and it, and it meets the spirit of what we believe the township is looking for. So that's why I'm saying to you, I think we, we're trying and we're looking for a little direction from you.
Sure.
So if you can think of someplace else where you'd like three more trees, you know, I mean, I don't want to just put trees on to put trees on.
No, I understand.
But I think that...
Right. Well, you guys can help decide. I mean, it's just our greenbelt typically talks about one tree for every 30 feet along the roadway. That's where the greenbelt area is. They've got the trees in, typically they're maybe like 40 or so feet apart. We could cluster them, you could fit them in. It's where, how far we want to go on this. I'll let you guys decide, too.
I think there's an opportunity for a few more, at least on the front, the bottom left corner, right, where you've got them numbered 1 through 10. There's probably an opportunity along that line to add a couple more in there.
So, so I think you could easily add maybe just three more, just to get again, because what the greenbelt talks about is just kind of like this natural clustering of trees. I think you can selectively place where you want them, so you have the view still to your business. But I think it would help just kind of create that softening, just, you know, so we're closer to meeting what their ordinance requires.
So Jeff, you're suggesting that we find a way to tuck three more in there in the front, front area in there?
Yeah, I think that's what we're asking.
Between 1 and 10.
Yeah.
The 1.
I think you can put three more in.
Thank you. Figure that out.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
All right, I believe we've gone through that, and we are at the point in the evening where you need to decide what you wish to do with this application tonight. If you're so inclined, the staff's recommendation has been covered, and the motion is contained on page 7.
If the planning, I'm sorry, if the planning commission were, were so inclined to make a motion, I think, given that this is two special land uses, I would be looking for confirmation that we could note in the minutes of some items that start on, you know, the bottom of page 6 and extend on to page 7.
Okay, would you like us to run through them and not have had them?
Yes, please.
All right. Item 1, the site plan with special land use is consistent with the use criteria of Section 6.6, 5.8, A through F.
Agree.
Agree.
Yeah.
Okay. Item 2, the screening and buffering requirements of Section 4.5, 8.6, for a fueling station adjacent to a residential district have unsatisfied.
I think we beat that one up enough.
Yep.
Yes. Item 3, the parking provided is sufficient for the uses proposed based on the potential for the shared parking between the contiguous uses.
I agree.
Okay. Item 4, the waiver of a strict application of the architectural standards of Section 5.24 is provided based on a finding that the proposed architecture and building materials satisfy the intent of the standards.
Agree.
Okay. Item 5, the outdoor sales component is permitted so long as it is contained within the three designated and screened areas shown on the site plan.
It has been our other criteria, I think, as well.
For the outdoor seating? For the outdoor seating area?
Yes, there's other criteria.
Oh, that was the sales area, so now we want to hit the seating area. We could add that.
I was going to put that.
That the out, you want us to just say something there that the outdoor...
Well, if, if you were to get to a motion...
I was going to include it.
Make a motion.
And it's out there.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, then the, if we were able to make a collective determination on the above, then the recommendation of the planning department is to forward the proposal to the township board with a recommendation of conditional approval for the Mug and Bops site plan with special land use, SP number 533. And you see the motion there, if you're so inclined.
Right.
Yep.
Moves to recommend the Heartland Township Board approves the site plan with special land use application number 533 for Mug and Bops at the northeast corner of M-59 and Clark Road, subject to the following conditions. One, administrative review by the planning department of a revised site, revised landscape plan that satisfies any directives of the planning commission provided during the meeting of November 5th, 2015. Two, administrative review by the planning department of a revised site plan that satisfies all outstanding items specified in the planning department's review letter dated October 29th, 2015, and the directives of the planning commission provided during the meeting of November 5th, 2015. Administrative review by the planning department of a revised plan that demonstrates compliance with all applicable standards for outdoor seating area is contained in Section 4.47 of the Township zoning ordinance. And satisfaction of the issues addressed by the Township engineer, fire marshal, and DPW director in their respective review letters. And number 5, submittal of a pollution incident protection plan consistent with the requirements of Section 4.58 of the zoning ordinance. And number 6, compliance with the requirements of all state and county agencies, including but not limited to MDOT, Livingston County Road Commission, MDEQ, State Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, State Liquor Control Commission, which may also include a pathway location designation. Number 7, administrative approval of separate sign permit applications for all proposed wall canopy and free standing signage. And number 8, it might be a little redundant, but outdoor seating meets township's ordinances.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend approval of the site plan with special land use, application number 533 from Commissioner Voight, a second from Commissioner Grissom. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close nay. Motion carries. Congratulations. You're on to the next step.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep. And welcome to Heartland.
So for the benefit of the applicant, the next township board meeting would be November 17th. Should be a Tuesday, I hope. And given the way the calendar falls, you can expect that the board would have this included on their agenda at that meeting.
Thank you.
Dave, you want to revise prints by a certain date with these things we talked about tonight? Or is this just getting...
No, we would see if the board has any additional changes, and the prints that the planning commission saw here tonight will be the same ones that the board sees. It eliminates confusion if the board sees something different than what the planning commission reviewed this evening.
Okay.
Makes it easier on us.
Thank you.
All right, next up on our agenda, item 9, call of the public. Anyone? Seeing none, we'll close call of the public. Item 10, planner's report.
Thanks again. We had a, two concept meetings this late afternoon that Chair Fox and Secretary Voight sat in on, along with a team of other township officials and county officials. One was for a very preliminary concept for the southwest corner of M-59 and Old US-23. If you can picture, there's 30 vacant acres right there at the corner, but then behind that, those 30 vacant acres is the athletic fields for, the softball fields, the driving range. There's a putt-putt there that I don't think's been open for a couple of years. And the, the potential buyer came to us this afternoon to go through their concept for a mixed-use development of commercial along the frontage, M-59 and Old 23, with some apartments behind there and transitioning back to some townhomes as you kind of move further back from the, from the corner, back toward the...
Southwest.
Yeah, toward the southwest. Thank you. So that's a, a, a very exciting but a very significant development in Heartland Township to have that level of commercial and residential at that, at that corner. Would also obviously involve a whole lot of analysis with respect to traffic and making some improvements to long, to M-59 and Old 23 and at, and the intersection. So certainly more to come on that, assuming that the developer proceeds based on all the feedback they got today. The second meeting we had was for an assisted living memory care facility on the north side of M-59, just to the east of the M-59 driving range. There's a vacant piece of property right there that was recently sold, and the buyers are looking to do, I think it was a 120-bed assisted living facility that would have a mix of assisted living, but then also the, the folks in the, the memory care, which unfortunately is a, is a market that is, is growing as our population ages. Because obviously we know that there's another proposal for an assisted living component to the Newberry Place Plan Development down at M-59 and Fenton Road. Other than that, we've been working hard on getting a lot of the projects that the planning commission has seen in the past couple of months through the construction review process, Fiddler Grove being one of them, the 25 detached condominiums on the south side of 59 between Autumn Woods and San Marino. Speedway is moving along with their construction plans. So all these plans that you have seen over the past few months are, are now getting to the construction review and approval process. And in the instance of, say, the Turn-in-Two softball complex, they're up there moving a lot of dirt, getting that one ready. I know they want to get as much done before the, the ground freezes on them. So that's at least off the top of my head what, what we've got going since the last time I met with this planning commission. As I think you all know, this will be my, my last planning commission meeting. This was my last day with Heartland Township. I have accepted another position, and as excited as I am about it, I'm also pretty nervous about it. This has been a, a great opportunity for me the past three years, working for Heartland Township and working with all of you. You know, I had a, my, my colleagues in Township Hall threw a nice staff luncheon for me this, this afternoon. And I said to them, and I'll say to you, that, you know, two and a half years ago, I chose to move my family to, to Heartland Township, my, my wife and my two young sons. And it was a decision that wasn't necessarily based on the fact that I worked for, worked for the township, but it was a decision based on the fact that I knew enough about Heartland Township at that point to say, "That's the town where I want my kids to grow up." And I don't know that there's any stronger endorsement that a husband and a father can, can give to a community than to say, "That's where I, that's where I want my family. That's where I want to raise my family." And that's, that's a credit to you folks, the credit to the folks in our township board, and the credit to the folks that I work with every day, that we have such a fantastic community, a community that people like me want to live in. And all these, these developments that we're seeing, they, they see that Heartland Township's a fantastic community, too. And again, it's, it's a credit to folks like you who sit up here on a Thursday evening making some, some, some tough decisions and thoroughly vetting these proposals that come in front of you. So I just want to thank you for the opportunity to, to work with you over these years, and, and thank you for continuing to, to serve this community that I love, that I plan to live in for the next 20-something years, so...
Well, thank you. We're going to miss you.
Thank you.
We wish you luck.
I do.
I'm sure we all do. Item 11, committee reports. Go ahead.
Can I ask some questions here while we're still on the...
Yeah, we can go in.
Concept plans?
Sure.
How many, roughly how many residential units on the southwest corner there?
It's probably right in front of me. It's, it was a lot.
470 apartments and 50 townhomes.
Saying 50 townhomes?
Yeah.
And 107?
470.
500 units.
Right. Is that going to be in a little competition or perhaps a lot of competition with each other? That's highly...
It's, we talked about that, that this afternoon, that there, they look to be trying to capture the same market that Mayberry Homes is with their Newberry Place Development. And they're aware of it.
Yeah. Well, we need to be aware of that because, sorry to interrupt, but we need to be aware of that because I've seen in other communities where competition has played out and they each get developed half.
Yep.
And so we're left with a big road structure and a bunch of room for building, but no building. So, and it seems like they're going to be on a parallel path here with development. So we need to be very cognizant of that when we're approving these plans.
Absolutely.
If we approve our plans, I should say. And then the other one, can you compare the size of the assisted living with the, with the existing one on 59?
With Village Manor?
Yeah, with Village Manor.
I honestly, I guess I don't know how many beds they have at Village Manor. If anyone does...
Well, Village Manor now has a waiting list.
Oh, I'm not saying...
Oh, yeah.
I'm saying just in my head.
Oh.
I think that was about 120 or...
Oh.
It's definitely less than 200 over there, perhaps.
I, I'm not even sure. I want to venture a guess with, with how many beds they have in Village Manor. I mean, I could go...
The one difference is there's no memory care in Village Manor.
Right.
Yeah, but it's the number, I'm just thinking of the sheer size for comparison.
Physically, it's a big building, the one they're proposing next to the golf court or the driving road. He had a, he had a footprint and elevation.
Yeah.
It's a two, two-story. It's a two-story rectangular. It's, it's big.
Okay. All right. That's it. And then I guess I would just like to thank you. It was, it's been a pleasure working with you, Dave, so we're going to miss you, and hopefully we can find somebody in your calendar to replace you, so...
Thank you. Okay, committee reports. Anything else? Not, we would need a motion.
Oh, I have, I'm sorry, you have something.
Okay.
And this is really something for the planning commission to consider. It's a little, and I was asked last night to kind of approach you, the planning commission, if you, the planning commission would like to celebrate with the township board, they have a holiday event, I think it's December 3rd. It's usually off-site, with the other staff and the township board. We've never done that before. I sort of was the promoter to determine whether or not this group would like to join that, our township board and the staff. I told Kathy Hornig, our treasurer, I'd get back to her on this, so I don't know if you want to take, if there's, if this is not something you want to take a night out or...
Well, we have a meeting that night.
Yeah, I...
Oh, right.
Well, no, but didn't, will you be for that reason?
I'll be here.
I'd change it to December 16th.
Oh, do they change it?
Yeah, I, I, maybe we want to confirm the date, because I know this, this date has been in flux because there's a planning commission meeting on December 3rd. And I, I think we may be zeroing in on December 16th.
Yeah.
Which is a Wednesday night.
So, I mean, if, if, there's a couple of things we could do. The other, the other option is to do a joint meeting with the township board and afterwards have a little, you know, sort of get, get together. That's another option that we might want to consider, but it is another night out of your day and, you know, help people, especially on the holiday time, there's a lot of things going on, so... So I could kind of get an idea.
So you want you to commit right now?
I know Treasurer Hornig, who's organizing this, does have to get back to the caterer and those sorts of things, so I don't know that, we're looking for an answer, or Joe's looking for an answer tonight, but maybe sooner rather than later, just for the sake of ordering enough food and all that.
What's your deadline, Joe?
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning.
You know, I think if I...